Your mics are on?
Okay, now I'm done.
We'll call the meeting to order, please. Reverend Michael Rowe, would you please come forward and lead us in invocation? Everyone rise, please.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, you give to human leaders the authority and responsibility to serve your people. Send down upon the members of this city council the spirit of wisdom, generosity, and justice, that with true dedication they may faithfully fulfill their mandate to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Councilman Slakka, could you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Simons.
Here.
Councilmember Longkart.
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Okay. We got roll, let's see, we've got roll called down. We have a public comment on agenda items, please. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item, please come forward.
Good evening. Bob Hillier at Bonita Springs Lions Club. First, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
On a long-term. I come representing the Bonita Springs Lions Club and want to thank the city of Bonita Springs and the city council for allowing us to partner with you to build a park at Riverside Park for the kids. We've already had a number of families come over to our club and tell us how important that park is for them and for their families. So it has definitely made a difference in the community and the children and the families to be able to have a place to go. On the agenda tonight, we have a recommended name for the park and we also have a lion's fountain that we'd like to have put out there if you so desire. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Roger Brunswick, City of Bonita Springs. Good evening, council mayor. A couple of things I want to say. Congratulations to you. You took a lot of shots over the bow and you came out truth, justice, and the American way. And I'm proud of you. You ran a nice, clean campaign. You did a great job. I'm glad to have you serving us for the next four years. I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody here, the council, the staff, my running mate, Barb Barnes Buchanan, everybody. It was a great race. I congratulate Peter Simmons. I'll do everything I can to help him. It was a clean race on our side and I just thank all of my supporters. I want to thank my campaign manager, Nancy Neeran Ray Fobian. I want to thank my campaign treasurer, Henry Byrd. You've got a great staff, as you already know. Carl, Diane, Audrey, everybody, the whole staff, and they were all very helpful. And I will continue to serve the city of Bonita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, please come forward.
Good evening.
Hello.
For the record, Barbara Barnes Buchanan, also a candidate for District Four, and I'm here to congratulate the mayor. Congratulations. And I want to congratulate Peter and let all the, all my co-candidates also know how wonderful it was, what an educational experience, what a really great, wonderful experience it has been. And I can't thank the residents that supported me enough. It was really wonderful to see the city rally, not just around me, but around my co-candidates. And I'm here and I can't thank enough, actually Martha helped me a great deal, giving me some great insights. And it was a totally new experience being on the opposite side of the staff desk here and over here and back here. And I encourage anyone in the future to take the opportunity, take the challenge, enter the race, be part of it, be part of our city. And I look forward to working really hard with all of our elected officials and working hard with Peter and working hard with all of you. And it's always been a pleasure to work with the city and for the city. And thank you so very much. And overall, once again, thank you to all those people and friends that supported me and worked really hard for me. Love you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love you too.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening. Rick Steinmeier. Back to the agenda items. Lions Pride Park. That sounds like a private park owned by the Lions Club. Now, I suggested that Bonita Springs Lions Pride Park, but somebody said, "Well, that's too long of a name." I said, "Well, okay, BS Lions Club Park, Lions Pride Park." I just, it's on city property. I just think it becomes too much of a ownership issue. But, all right. 12A, now the redistricting. From Big Hickory Pass to Big Carlos Pass to Drawbridge on Astero Boulevard is in District One, which is also on the other side of town. I don't see why that little stretch of, of maybe 50 tourists live there, maybe 50 units on the north end of Lower's Key. I don't understand how our councilman can drive all the way around there to visit his little, little piece of vacant land up there. So I'd like to see that added into maybe three and something like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. Anyone else, please come forward.
I'm Al Greenwood. I own a Buffalo Chips restaurant on 041 in Bonita. I'm here to thank the council and all the members for taking the initiative to start a program to redevelop and improve 041. We started with the Lee County Redevelopment Committee in June of 1990. We worked 10 years. We fought Lee County all the way to get funding and we finally got enough money to do a small bit of improvement. But I know with the council and the city behind you that we can really make 041 something to be proud of. When I first moved here in 1982, Fifth Avenue and Naples were all boarded up and it was desolated and it was ugly. And look at it today. It's beautiful. It's vibrant. And we can do the same thing here with your support. And I want to let you know that I saved the 10 years of records that I have, two file cabinets full, and I want to donate it to the city, whoever's going to take over this project.
All right.
So you don't have to reinvent the redevelopment wheel and spend two years spinning your tires. We've already done that. So I'm hoping that this data will help you. It has all kinds of guidelines and suggestions for storefronts and looks and paint and town centers. I have all that data to help whoever's going to kick this off. And I want to help. I'm a member of the Merchants Association and we want to support this. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Addressing the strategic plan that is on the agenda tonight, I see that we've made plans for improving sidewalks and parks and playgrounds and everything else. And even though everyone on this council talked about how important this beach was to our local economy and everything else, I find it hard to believe that there's nowhere on the strategic plan that even mentions the word "beach." So I hope that you will give it some real good thought when you start talking about it later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Juan Romero, Corinero Casa Mexico. Mr. Nelson.
Good to see you.
Congratulations for your, we've got a, again, our mayor with us and we are very happy to have you. Today, I want to talk to you about the Mayor's Cup. It has been five years we organized this event and brings a lot of people from the area, southwest Florida, and some other teams who they are a little bit further out or north, and even Miami wants to come to play with us. It has been developed a nice program for kids and adults. And thank you, you mayors and board members, to supporting this event. It has very successful the past five years. So this year is going to be the sixth year in the role we are doing it, and every year is getting better and better. So thank you for your support. Thank you for supporting the sports soccer for adults and kids. Recently, we play at national estate level and we get a second place. So it has been a very successful program and hopefully you can supporting us and help us with this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Juan. Anyone else, please come forward.
Dawn Konsekowski. And I'd just like to mention something about the strategic plan and under review, correct and revise as necessary, Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. If this means that the zoning map and listed uses that are inconsistent with the plan are made consistent with the text of the plan prior to any more changes to the comprehensive plan, I'm thrilled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward.
Good evening. Marion Zimmerman. I'm also here from the beach to encourage the council to very much consider making sure the beach is a part of the strategic plan. We are gateway to the golf and I hope that that's true. And we would like to support the city as much as we can and hope that it is reciprocated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this time, please come forward? No? Okay. We're going to go ahead and move right along to proclamations and presentations. Would Christine Ross please come forward, please? You are Christine Ross, aren't you?
Yeah.
How do you do?
Hi.
Everybody knows Christine Ross, I think. Christine is with the Chamber of Commerce. She actually is the Chamber of Commerce, let me put it that way. I've got to tell you, she has been a pleasure to work with for all of us, for our staff, for everybody. We formed a great relationship here with a lot of the entities here in Bonita Springs, a lot of the not-for-profits, a lot of our governmental partners all around, but none better than the one we formed with the Chamber of Commerce. It's just been great. And it's due in part mostly to this lady standing right here. So, and there's just something special I want to bring to everyone's attention here in recognition of distinguished achievement. This is yours, by the way, so you don't know. "For the past 25 years, the News Press Media Group has honored notable residents of southwest Florida," that's you, "for their contributions to the community in business, arts, social services, citizen activism, health care, and public service. The mayor and city council members of city of Bonita Springs, Florida congratulate one of our partners, Christine Anne Ross, President of the Bonita Springs Chamber of Commerce, for being chosen as the 2011 News Press Person of the Year. And thank her for her leadership and dedication in making our beautiful city a better place to live, work, and play." Christine, on behalf of this city council, on behalf of the citizens, thank you so much. We are honored.
I'm really overwhelmed by the recognition, but it's because of people like the city council here and Ben and the Astero Council of Community Leaders that everybody just got in the boat with us. So thank you and I'm very humbled and I appreciate that.
It's our pleasure. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah. Get you with the mayor.
That's so sad.
Thank you, Christine. Congratulations, Christine. You went for Team Bonita.
Yep.
All right, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Council, do you have anything you would wish to pull from there? And let's give it a minute and think about it. No? No one? Is there a recommendation to approve?
So move.
Have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Spear.
Aye.
Councilmember Simons.
Yes.
Councilmember Longkart.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, we're at the first reading of the following ordinance. Audrey, would you like to do that for us, please?
Thank you, yes. Now, these are first readings, so I do not have an affidavit or publication for these three ordinances, but I'll read them all back to back.
And there is no public comment at this time, correct?
There's no public comment and they all will be heard on February 13th, 2012. That's your regular zoning day.
Okay.
The first is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the city of Bonita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance number 02-16 as amended so as to amend the future land use map for the Small Scale Development Amendment 11BOS CPA 00001, known as Palm Lake Resort Small Scale Comp Plan Amendment, which is located in Section 1, Township 48, South Range 25 East, to redesignate approximately 1.5 acres of land for moderate-density residential to medium-density multifamily residential, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. This is a first reading, but it's also had a public hearing before the local planning agency, which also constitutes its first reading and again, will be heard on February 13th. The second ordinance is a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, in reference to WCI Communities Pelican Landing, DRI, CPD, RPD, for notice of proposed change to Pelican Landing Development of Regional Impact, DRI 19293121, extending the build-out date to May 20th, May 20th, 2020, extending termination date to May 20th, 2026, amending various conditions of the DRI to reflect completion and passage of time for certain items, as well as statutory changes to biennial reporting and modifying the interface zone monitoring requirements on land located west of US 41, east of Astero Bay, north of Bonita Bay, DRI, and that portion of land within the city northern corporate limits. The DRI runs to south of Williams Road. Bonita Springs, Florida, on 2,749.7 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. And the third and final ordinance is a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Palm Lake Resort LLC to rezone from Agricultural AG2 to a recreational vehicle plan development, RVPD, to allow a maximum of nine recreational RV and/or mobile home MH units within the project, located at 11334 Duck Lake Loop, Bonita Springs, Florida, on 1.5 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading of this ordinance will be held on February 13th, zoning hearing in these chambers.
Audrey, before council talks about this, we can, we can approve all three of these at the same time? Is that correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay, good. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion to send a second reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second? Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed this, the Palm Lake Resort, I saw it in the newspaper last week. Is that the way it works?
Yes. Now, there's two different advertisements for Palm Lake Resort. You have a comp plan Palm Lake Resort, and that is one type of advertisement, and you have a second one, which is a zoning advertisement. There's two separate advertisements. The first reading for Palm Lake Resort will be five days from today, Diane? The zoning, the zoning hearing, not the comp plan one. That's a regular type of ad. And actually, there's another advertisement afterwards, which is a city charter requirement following the ordinance adoption. The Palm, the other one is the comprehensive plan, and that would show it on the map identified in the location. And as I mentioned, the first reading would have been the local planning agency reading and the second reading would have been the one that's coming up February 13th. Now, I need to point out that they're advertised, the zoning ordinances, the two that under first reading of zoning ordinances, A and B, those are advertised consistent with 166.041. The other ordinance is advertised consistent with the Growth Management Act, 163.041. And I can't tell you the exact number. I can tell you that it was handled by community development and I did review them.
Coming back to my question, it was publicized before we do this, that's the procedure?
Because it went to the zoning, well, the LPA heard the one ordinance, you were present at that meeting.
Yes.
And the zoning board heard the other. So that's the same proceeding that we always follow.
Okay.
Okay.
For every ordinance, for zoning ordinances.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
Since we're doing these all together, for the comprehensive plan amendment, several years ago, we passed allowing, allowing, that we have to send out notice to people within 365 feet, the neighbors, 375, sorry.
That's correct. We did an administrative code. I do not know if that was adhered to. I think, I need to ask Mr. Dolmer for that.
Okay. Well, let me ask you about the second one on WCI. You send out a notice to all neighbors within 375 feet of WCI community. That's a lot of people.
I'm going to let Mr. Dolmer respond to that one.
Oh, very nice. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, we did. It was a lot of letters.
That was going to be what I thought.
There was some very angry people, I believe, at community development that week.
But you know what? The good news is both on comprehensive plan amendments and zoning amendments, we are letting the neighbors know.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Spear.
Aye.
Councilmember Simons.
Aye.
Councilmember Longkart.
No.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Okay. Motion carries. Audrey, you have anything else for us under ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are at mayor and council member items and reports, and I'm going to, just, I don't do this very often, go first, but in this case, I just read this in this little magazine here, The Spotlight, about the YMCA. I want to read this to you.
Yeah.
"The Bonita Springs YMCA is poised to reopen under the ownership of South County Family YMCA of Venice, nine months after being shuttered by Collier County-based YMCA of the Palms. In late January, the YMCA Y, or Venice Y, reached an agreement in principle to assume ownership of the Kent Road facility from the Palms. The deal is subject to the remaining due diligence, documentation, and formal lend approval." So I want to thank everybody who was involved with that. Well done.
Number two for Team Bonita.
Nicely done. Nicely done. Let's see. We're on A. Update on the Veterans Advisory Committee activities. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Basically, I just want to say that it appears that we're doing fairly well in raising the remaining funds that are necessary. Matter of fact, Bob Gillette invited us to the Pelican Isles Yacht Club and they had a 50/50 drawn, and then their 50/50s are $1, $20 each. So I think we walked away with well over $500 that they donated to us for that. And Monday at, I attended the BBIA meeting and BBIA donated $1,000 for the monument, so I thank them very much for that. The issue here tonight is basically is that the location of the monument was approved at the southwest site. However, there was a concern by the committee that on the back of the monument, the names that will be inscribed will not be visible to the individuals who have donated. And so after looking at it again, they thought about if they can remove this tree, and I guess it went all through the process appropriately with all the city committees. So, so it was approved and it's going to be moved forward so that that can be well visible. And also, you know, when we put the flags up, it won't be budding up against the flags too. So, so still in the southwest corner, just a little closer.
Okay. So today, you're looking for approval, council approval of that location?
Yes, sir. Second.
Is a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just would like to join in commending Bob Gillette, who's been a remarkable citizen of Bonita Springs in terms of what he's done in support of this effort and also the traveling wall and a lot of other things. He's, I'm proud to be a fellow citizen of his and this community. Thank you, John. I'll share that with him.
Nicely done. Nicely done. Martha?
Well, ditto to that, but also the existing memorial that we have there, where there's the flagpole and the POW, that needs to have some help. And I don't know if our city can do that. It's pretty simple. I see Arlene is chomping at the bit.
Yeah. We've already.
Yeah, you've already addressed that.
Okay.
Just reset that light in the pavement, because kids keep kicking that around and, yeah. There's Arlene.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. When we had the wall there, we had some maintenance issues with it. It is actually the, the.
VFW.
VFW posts. They made a donation to have that monument at Riverside Park, and they are taking full responsibility for it and are going to take all the maintenance issues that need to be addressed, including fixing some bricks on it, working on the lighting, and they're even thinking about updating the plaque that's on there as well.
Wonderful.
And hopefully that we can get that coincided with the other, our monument going in at the same time and recognize them and appreciation of their contribution as well.
That's great.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Spear.
Aye.
Councilmember Simons.
Aye.
Councilmember Longkart.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Steve, do you have anything else for us?
Just one other item. Today, I had the pleasure meeting with Laura and Juan and, Juan? Jose. Okay. Jose, where am I getting that from? Anyway, and the social media issue that they are tackling is just mind-boggling. I think it was a wonderful, wonderful presentation, and I know Pat's involved in it too. Laura, thank you. You're doing a great job. I'm looking forward to seeing this. It's going to be so accessible to those individuals that have trouble navigating through the system. So, great job.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go to, let's see, it says a resolution, "Resolution Accepting the Resignation of Member of the City of Bonita Springs Board of Land Use Appeals." It's a resignation by John Mathis. John's done a great job for us, I think, but he's resigning and I'll make a motion to accept that resignation. Is there a second?
Second.
So a motion and a second? Any other comments?
Yeah, we're going to miss him.
Yeah, we are. We're going to miss him. He's done a good job, but.
Yep, he cares.
He's not leaving or anything like that, okay? He's.
He's not getting euthanized or neutered or?
No, he's not. I don't think so. With that, roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Spear.
Aye.
Councilmember Simons.
Aye.
Councilmember Longkart.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Slakta.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to move along the way here. John, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, two items, one very quick and then one that may take a few minutes. The first one is I could not be prouder to have seen the four folks, three gentlemen, one woman, who stepped up in District Four and ran to replace me. As you saw to the candidates today and the, everything I saw about what they did was clean and above board and any one of the four of those folks would have done this seat that I've sat in for four years after, following John Warfield, John Joyce, would have done this District proud. And I'm looking forward to working with Peter Simmons. He and I spent two hours today talking about issues and, and doing what I hope to do, which is to work very hard to bring him up to speed as quick as possible, to serve the city and serve District Four to the best of his ability, and really look forward to him doing that. So that's, that's number one. Number two, and I, the day after the election, I sort of regret that I have to say some of what I feel like I have to say here today, but I got to say it. There, and no commentary, please, Martha.
I won't.
The, I was very disturbed over a lot of what I've seen over the last six or eight weeks concerning what was, what I felt was blatant ignoring and violation of the Charter in terms of the partisanship that was dragged into what is, by the explicit terms of the Charter, a nonpartisan election. And in particular, I would like to recognize the Executive Committee of the Lee County Republican Party, who made it their job to try their best to influence the governing and governance of our city in ways that I found frankly appalling. First of all, I mean, there were, there were repeated efforts to label people Republicans, Democrats, liberals, conservative, crooked, corrupt, and all sorts of things. And that organization's conduct was just absolutely outrageous and frankly, that group ought to be ashamed of themselves. A lot of what some of the candidates, there's some candidates that spent a lot of time talking about violating the spirit of the Charter. The spirit of the Charter was not violated in this instance. The explicit Charter language was violated when we talk about nonpartisanship. Secondly, and I think this is frankly even more important, not only did the Executive Committee, in my opinion, really stomp on our Charter, some of the spending, some of the mailing, some of the things that were done clearly put several candidates, in my opinion, in violation of the spending limits in our city Charter. There were, there were expenditures made, in-kind expenditures made, that I really think, once again, stomped on not the spirit of the Charter, but the explicit provisions of the start of the Charter that say that spending limits are $2 and some per voter, per candidate. that say that spending limits are two dollars and some per voter, per candidate, and that spending limit is not only spending by candidates or on behalf of candidates. That's not the spirit of the Charter. That's the express provision of the Charter. And thirdly, I'm concerned that some of that spending may well have violated the state election laws. I would, this is not something that I think the council needs to address tonight. It's not on the agenda. I'm gonna be gone, so you all can do what you want to do, but I would encourage this city council to, at a future agenda, discuss this and determine whether this is something that the city attorney ought to look into, whether a request ought to be made at the Florida Election Commission, and see if any violations happen, and if so, that the appropriate action be taken. Again, I regret very much having to have this as one of the last things I'd say at this meeting, but again, it had to be said, and it had to be said in a public way. And I don't necessarily feel better having said it, because it was really, really disturbing what I saw happen in my town over the last six or eight weeks. And that's it. Thank you very much. Other than that, appreciate the opportunity to serve. I really, really, really enjoyed these last four years. And in spite of what people think about it, the seven of us up here, the camaraderie we have, even as we violently sometimes disagree, you can't help but become good friends with the people that you serve with. There's really no choice. You spend too much time with them to not get along with them. And I appreciate the friendship that I've developed with each and every one of you, and look forward to participating in this town's civic affairs for many years to come in other capacities. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, John. Never lacking in courage.
Nope.
Martha, what do you have for us?
What a great segue.
No, that was a segue, really?
No, mine's a segue.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, John, from me to you. You never disappoint.
Aw, you got that boy a potted plant.
I got him a potted plant. Nothing that's gonna die in a week, you know?
Cute.
And yeah, you're gonna open it up and weep. But I admire you, and I'm honored to certain next to you, John. I had a duck a couple of times, but that's okay. It makes it a little more exciting. If you can't break it, you can't fix it. So anyhow, onto my report. You read your card, and that'll say everything I need to say. Maybe we'll have time later. I went up to Tallahassee on Thursday, on Monday, sorry, this Monday. I flew up in the morning and flew back with Commissioner Judah and Vice Mayor McDenham from Sanibel. It was cheap, too, and I got there in two hours. And we split the bill. So, on the county plane. So the fertilizer ordinance that was supposedly gonna pass through the Senate got temporarily postponed. I'll be going up again either Monday or maybe Thursday. They'll spring that us on. It's about five o'clock on Friday afternoon, I'm sure. But you know, boy, if people knew what was going on up there, they'd just be upset, you know? Please, again, I plead with you, pay attention to what's going on in your state house and your state senate, and call them. They respond when you call. If you're upset about something going on that you read in the newspaper, oh my gosh, they're doing it again, or oh my gosh, you know, they're infringing on local government. Because I have to tell you, local government is the closest government. You're here tonight. You can influence us. You know, you're speaking your mind. We listen to you. You can call us on the phone. You can email us. Sometimes that's not the case. There are so many lobbyists running around up there, that when the local officials who represent you go up there, they didn't show up for appointments that we had made with them. We sat in their offices, and they just didn't show up. And I find that reprehensible, because that's their job, to be the leaders of the people. We elect them. They should represent us, not special interests. So anyhow, we're gonna go up again and beat on their doors. I think we showing up, us showing up, and we're bringing more people with us this time, makes a difference. So show up on our doors, as you do here. Show up on theirs there, too. Otherwise, some of them were very helpful. So I'm grateful to them. I do want to talk about the sixteen new businesses in town this month with, that will be occupying thirty thousand square feet and fifty new employees. So yay for January 2012. We're off to a good start. And four businesses are relocating in the city, occupying ten thousand square feet and twenty employees. So thank you, John, for that report. It's very refreshing to see that month after month after month, you know? And we're retaining business, and we're bringing new people. And I talked to somebody this morning who said, well, you know, we still have that one point five million, I said, square, empty square feet. I said, no, actually, I think we're down to one now. Isn't that right, Mayor? Something like that? We got four hundred and ninety-five thousand square feet filled up last year, so I'm with that. Back to the lovely trip to Tallahassee. So I did speak to several members there, both the House sponsor and the Senate sponsor, on the decoupling, hey, that looks good next to you, John, on the decoupling. And that is going to either come or go by this week. If you're interested in the greyhounds not being raced as much as the dog track, please feel free to call Members Young in the House and Senator Sobel in the Senate. And you can find them online. So just go to, you know, Florida State Legislature, Senator Sobel, Representative Young, and give them a call, or send them an email, and tell them you don't want those dogs raced at the greyhound track so much. And why government's regulating that anymore, I don't know, because most people, you know, it's, the business is down a lot, so. And again, last but not least, thank you, John. I was very honored to serve with you, and I don't think your service is over. I know you're Team Benita, and you're gonna be around, and please give me hell, but not too much. And Mayor, congratulations to you, too. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. Bill, what do you got for us today?
Thank you, Ben. Let me say, John, it's been my pleasure to serve with you in the four years, and your eloquence is obviously displayed all the time. And of course, being between you and I, we have Martha, and that's always a pleasure.
I'll make sure it's more of a pleasure.
Okay. But thank you for serving as you have, and I look forward to seeing you along the way. And I really appreciate your comments, all of them.
Thank you, Bill.
Certainly. Secondly, we had a workshop on Monday night for the people that live in Eastbrook and Westbrook Estates. I guess, no, Esbrooke Estates, whatever. We had a very good meeting, I thought. Carl was excellent with his board and everything. And he, we got what they'd like to have, and we've had the county there, and it was a fruitful meeting from my, I think it was from everybody that was there, including the audience. So I look forward to the, having the wall for them in some fashion down the road. And again, thanks for the staff with their excellent presentation. Thank you. And Ben?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot, Bill. Steve?
That wasn't a try, did it?
Mr. Mayor, congratulations. It's, it has been an honor to work with you the last years, and I'm looking forward to your leadership. But I'm even more impressed with your demeanor after this election, and the way you handled the charges and what I consider to be inappropriate sorts of behaviors. So congratulations. John, we've been friends a long time. You don't give yourself enough credit. You've been an asset for the city, and you've made this dais better by being here. So thank you.
Sounds crazy.
It is crazy.
Crazy talking.
You know, you could have gotten a haircut, but you know.
Wow. Looks good.
And we look forward to Peter Simmons. And I want to say, I think it was the last council meeting, some folks on the beach were here, and I mentioned to them afterwards how impressed I was at the organization they bring to this issue of the beach, and that there are other issues out there in the city that I would like to have them behind as well. And they kindly invited me to come to a meeting, if I was so inclined. So I was treated very, very well. I thank you for that, audience. I hope we have some issues that you're interested in as well, because you have done a good job. If it wasn't for the citizens coming to this meeting, if this is your meeting, it's not our meeting. So thank you for coming and helping us. And Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Janet?
Okay, I've got to say it, too. Hi. Thanks, John. It's been a fun ride, huh? Last four years, so.
Fast.
Yep. So thank you again for everything you've done to help me, too, and for our city. And congratulations to the mayor.
Thank you very much.
And then I'll get into my spiel here. Saturday night, 7:00 PM, first movie's in the park, and Footloose, the original, I believe it's nineteen eighty-four version? So I think we're gonna have a little dancing going on in Riverside Park Saturday night.
I want everybody to know that John Spear's been waiting for this movie for probably six years to come on here. John, that's your favorite movie, isn't it?
I've never seen it before.
That's just crazy.
And finally, Benita Springs can play the Kevin Bacon game, because we'll have a connection with Kevin Bacon.
Yes, the six degrees of separation there.
Yeah, anyway.
So we need to thank our partners who have made this movie happen, and that would be Rotary, and also the Sheriff's Department, and also the Benita Springs Fire and Rescue. Without our partnerships with these groups, we wouldn't have movies in the park. And put on the calendar then, March 3rd is Happy Feet, and then Romancing the Stone on April 7th. So those are all great movies, and movies in parks are always a fun time. I'm gonna just piggyback on what Steve mentioned about the social stuff, and Benita Springs is going social, and you get to come and connect with us. Oh, I forgot about that. So we're going to have a little afternoon here, where we're gonna have special ops vehicles from the Sheriff's Department and the Benita Springs Fire and Rescue. And everyone can come and learn how to connect, which I think will be fun. And that's Saturday, February 11th, from noon to two. So good things in store there. This Friday, I'm very excited about, this will be the first installation of our Adopt a Bench program for our park. So our first one is going in, and it'll be over at the Lyles Hotel near the Butterfly Garden, and that's gonna happen at 11:00. So that's very, very neat. And I understand we've already got another one ordered. So thanks to those who are supporting that program. And also, the artist cottages are open every Sunday. They're doing art in the, art down there in the park from noon to five. I'm also very proud to say that District Two resident Don Thompson was named the 2012 Love of Benita Award recipient. Way cool. Way cool. Yes. Absolutely. And last week, I was invited to the charter school to participate with the students over there in literacy week, and I got to read to five kindergarten and first grade classes.
Aww.
What a hoot! I haven't read to a little one in a long time. That was a lot of fun. So that was pretty neat. And then last but not least, another favorite organization of mine is the Benita Springs Historical Society, and their speaker series is ongoing, and those are just way fun. And again, our Lions Club, who is again a good partner with the city and a good partner to the Historical Society, will be hosting at their Lions Club Center this Friday night. Chaz Mina will be portraying as an actor, Spanish Admiral Pedro Menendez, and he will be talking about claiming Florida. So that's gonna be really a fun time. And that is at 7:00 PM. And then, of course, the Old Time Florida Fish Fry, which will be coming up on Sunday, the 12th, and that's noon to two at the Lyles Hotel. So for more information on those events, please contact the Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Can I add to the social media thing, just to tell people?
What's the matter?
Can I add to the social media thing?
Just briefly, test.
Yes, briefly. I get this Quality Cities magazine, and you can catch it online. Maybe you guys get it, too.
Me? This one?
Me, that one. Look what John put online. Yeah. Anyhow, you can get this online, too, and read all about how your government works, but there's a particularly good article, floridalegacities.org or whatever. Go there and look under Publications. But this month, it's Social Media in Florida Cities, and about the legal issues and all that kind of stuff, and public records, and sunshine law, and all that kind of stuff. So you want to be up on that. That's where you can get your information.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go to public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time, please come forward on any old little thing you'd like to talk about.
Any little thing.
Come on up.
Jack Mummer. I'm from Little Hickory Island. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor Nelson, on your reelection.
Thank you, sir.
Topic that we've heard many times before, the beach renourishment. A lot of people there are concerned about the potential of a special assessment against the residents there, the owners. And I know we've been told many times that we've got approximately, as I understand, one point two million dollars in the budget that could go to that project. However, it is not designated to the project. That's very concerning, because we know that money could go elsewhere. What also concerns me is, it's kind of like our streets and any other public properties that we have. I'm surprised. We planned for streets in the budget, but we don't have dedicated line items for the beach, and we already know through history that approximately every nine to 10 years, this is gonna happen. So do the residents have to sit out there in fear that they're potentially going to be faced with a special assessment? That's very concerning. I've also been told, we live there, we enjoy the beach every day where others don't. Well, I would really take issue with that. I think every one of us here gets the enjoyment of the beach every day. You may not see it, but why do you live here? Why are your jobs here? Why has city government grown here? This city would not have the growth that it does, and would not be able to sustain that growth. We're considering a casino. Why is a casino considering even coming here? It's because the beach is here. It seems that everybody needs to participate in the beach renourishment, not through a special assessment. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Dawn Konsekowski. And I can speak on anything, right?
Sure.
Okay. On October 12th, 2000, the LPA had a meeting concerning the Benita Beach Road Corridor. Board members Grant expressed concerns regarding map two and five of the study. Ms. Gibbs from Lee County explained that the LPA would be making changes to these maps per their comprehensive plan to address those uses they want. They made that decision on the parcels in question, on the small-scale amendment and the zoning change that you are advertising. And the decision was not for commercial or RV. The decision was for moderate-density single-family. A nearby neighbor not responding to city's letter is a sign that they feel their voices will be ignored as they were in 2009. But not hearing those voices on January 17th, 2012, was not a license for the city to ignore the text of the comprehensive plan. It is not a license to ignore the law. And I just want to make one comment. I thank Councilman Spear for bringing up the explicit terms of the Charter that were a couple he missed. That under the Charter, it's specific that special exceptions and variances should be handled by ordinance and not by resolution. In addition, contrary to what the city attorney explained tonight about ordinances, she said that this is a zoning ordinance, so it didn't fall under the Section 29 ordinance in general. It says specifically, "Upon introduction of any ordinance, the proposed ordinance shall be read in full or by title at no less than two public meetings of the city council," not of the LPA, not of the zoning board, of the city council, "the first of which will be permission to advertise a public hearing." Thank you very much. Take care.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jane Whitehead. I'm with the Benita Springs Historical Society, and I have the honor of putting together the speaker series, which Janet so nicely gave us a plug for. And just to put you at ease, we're not here to ask for anything. We just wanted to say thank you to the city and to everybody who's been so helpful to us in putting this together. I think it's really created a lot of goodwill for us and for the city. And the Lions have been huge. That was a wonderful thing. It was great to mention that. And please come Friday. Pedro Menendez is gonna be fun and entertaining and educational.
Don't you have a fish fry going on, too?
Thank you so much. Thank you so, thank you so much.
I'm not in charge of the fish fry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Ann Mummer, and I would just like to emphasize the importance of having a designated line item in the city's budget for beach renourishment. I don't want you to get tired of this, but as a resident of Hickory Island, every seven years or whenever the beach needs to be re-nourished, I don't want, as a retired person and with limited income, I don't want to have this over our heads. So just to make us all relax, you know, to, so that we can enjoy everything that's there for all citizens of Benita. I think all the citizens would appreciate having the beach well-maintained and relax at having this a line item. So I just urge you to consider this in your planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Donna Nemsec, Historical Society. I didn't intend to talk, but you gave me an opening for a plug.
Uh-oh.
Fish Fry?
Oh, yeah.
It will be February 12th at the Lyles Hotel. Last year, we had over three It will be February 12th at the Lyles Hotel. Last year, we had over 300 people. You were there, Ben. It was a fun day. Again, the American Folk Trio is going to play, the good old boys, and it's only $10 if you get your tickets in advance, $12 at the door. So come. It's typical Benita Springs fun day, and we'd love to see you.
Good. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Come on up. I see you stalking the microphone.
Good evening. For the record, Kathy McGrath, I always like to talk about positive and fun things. Before I do that, in no particular order, congratulations, Ben. Congratulations to all the winners, but as I've told them to their face, there's no losers here. They're all winners. They're all gonna stay here, and they're all gonna, you know, still be involved. John, what can I say? And what you said before, you said it, I couldn't do it that well, but you said all the right things. Martha, thanks for fighting for the fertilizer thing. I'm convinced Washington is completely broken. It looks like Tallahassee is running close behind. So what we have is local politics, and it's so important for people to get involved in local things. And now I wanna relate a few real wonderful things that happened yesterday. I, after I voted, I happened to volunteer for Mayor Nelson, and I was at St. Leo's Church from 1:00 until 6:30. And three of Mr. Grothaus' people came and went, and we all got along famously. But what I wanna relate to you is a wonderful, two wonderful experiences. One was, a gentleman came up with about six or seven, they looked like middle-aged, excuse me, middle-school students, and he was obviously giving them a lesson in the democratic process of voting, because he came from the voting thing, and then he came up and he said, "Now, look at this. There's two different people here. They're holding two different signs. They're backing two different candidates." And he says, "What do you see?" He says, "Do you see them fighting? Do you see them screaming at each other? Do you see them?" He says, "This is what happens in the United States." He says, "Think about other places. They'd be killing each other." That was the one positive thing, and it really made me feel good. This man, I don't know what his name is, but he was doing a great job. The next thing was, this beautiful lady drives up in a car, and she stops, and she says, "I'm a citizen. This is my first time to vote, and I'm so excited, but I want to find out about the two candidates." Well, as ironic as it would be, who has just shown up but Mr. Grothaus? So she says, "I wanna find out what you're for and everything." So I said, "There you have it. You have the candidate right there." So I let him talk, and then, Ben, I did the best I could for you.
She's becoming increasingly more uncomfortable for me.
I don't know. I didn't ask her who she voted for, but I am gonna see her again. I wanna tell you, I said, "Where are you from, young lady?" She's from Slovenia. Slovenia. I said, "Oh, my goodness. My father was born in Hungary, in Budapest." Well, I know now, Slovenia is a small country. I had to write down the capitals. Bratslawa.
Bratslava.
Bratslawa. It is surrounded by Hungary, Austria, the Czech Republic, Poland, and the Ukraine. So she was so excited about voting and about being a citizen. And I said to her, "Congratulations." And you know what? I wish, I wish we could get her enthusiasm.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Rick Steinmeier, this drinking fountain, the Lions Club drinking fountain, it's really a neat-looking thing. I have concern about the maintenance, repainting if it gets vandalized and stuff like that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. There we go. Hello.
Hi, I'm Matt Holmes. I'm a resident of Brookside Estates. I guess we were...
I forget too sometimes.
There was a little confusion. We thought maybe that there was gonna be an item on the agenda regarding the proposed wall.
There is.
There is.
Oh. Did I miss it?
I guess there is confusion.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're not done with it.
You're just in time. Go ahead and talk.
No, no, no. I just wanted to, no, no.
This is, this is your, this is your big chance.
Tell us what you want.
Would you like there to be a wall there?
No, I think we're in general agreement that we want a wall.
Good.
It's just, and we appreciate the work that the city has done in preparing a budget and so forth.
Oh, good.
Taking us into consideration. I think what, the major concern that we all have is that the wall was not extended across the west, to the west of Oak Lane, which is across the two residential lots that are undeveloped, that were at one time being considered for a change in zoning, which
Right.
we opposed, and I guess there was some resolution as to the condition of those lots not being suitable for commercial development. So therefore, our concern as to sort of setting that in stone, so to speak, by extending the wall across there and defining our neighborhood, or our two neighborhoods, as being residential, you know, separate from the street.
Good. You get you. Good. Well done.
I apologize.
No, no. We get it.
See a lot of the residents here, and I...
This is the time to say it. So, thank you.
To be aware of our presence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
You're just getting...
I'm also lost.
You know exactly where you live.
Congratulations to all the, Nelson and everybody else. But I'm...
I'm sorry, your name for the record, please.
My name is Luis Carrillo.
Yes.
And I'm the husband of David Giambbo, and she was the one who sent me here. And I know what's good for me, so I obey what she tells me to do.
We have something in common already.
So she wanted to make sure that I, that I read this to you. I tried to paraphrase it a little bit, so I don't bore everybody to death.
Very good.
Okay. She said, "I thank the city council and the city manager for considering this issue, and I thank..." She's talking about the wall on Brookside Estates, and appreciate the work that the city manager has done, Carol Swin and Sarah Clark, and the, and their efforts they have made to listen to us and to manage the project properly. She said, "I support my neighbors in requesting the wall and so on. I strongly urge council members to approve a wall for our neighborhood as to, trying to wind up, you know, to finish up Benita Beach Road." The thing that she wanted to make sure, and before she went to work, because she's working now, the thing that she wanted to make sure to tell you is that, since the way the Benita Beach Road is laid out, the road goes this way, and then East Brook Drive is, is kind of, it's hard to explain, but it's like this. So even if you put a wall across, along the side of Benita Beach Road, it won't cover part of the neighborhood. So she was urging that it won't be put, the wall will continue, you know...
With a return.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, like on the east side, and the, oh, right, there you go. Yes, yes, right. Okay. All right. So we've been through this already?
No, no, no. You're good. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry for taking your time.
No, it's okay.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you. Anyway, here with my kids, came from work, picked them up from school, and gave them fast dinner, and rushed them over here. So, you know, I'm sorry if I'm...
Can you give him a receipt so his wife knows he was here? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time wishes to speak? Come forward, please. No? Saying no, we're gonna go ahead and go to the city attorney's report. Audrey, what do you have for us today?
Thank you. I have a resolution today to adopt for redistricting. It's that time. The election is over, and you have the same resolution that you had before you in 2000 or 2002, very similar. It's basically the guidelines under the Voting Rights Act to make sure that we follow good practices for adopting a redistricting maps. This is not the map itself.
May I make addition?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the criteria in creating redistricting maps is to follow geographical, natural geographical features like rivers and creeks and things like that, mountains, which we don't have.
I'll add that.
Yep. Follow geographical topography or whatever, however you say. Pardon? It's not just roads. It's not just roads. But for instance, we have a city, and we have certain bays, things that kind of cut us off and...
Well, and be careful how you word that, because make it should, or...
No, it's in the, it's in the text.
It's in the text.
Actually, and I looked at the constitution, the Florida constitution and the changes, and that applies to the legislation or legislative bodies. It does not apply to municipalities.
Okay.
But it's still, I'll use the language in there, and it will be, should be.
Yeah, it needs to be a guideline.
Right. This is a guideline for redistricting. It's not a mandatory.
Okay, good.
Right, right, right.
Anyone else have anything else? No? Motion to approve as, as adopted, or amended? Second? Anything else?
I just wanna say that I hope we return to some of what are the natural boundaries of some of these precincts from prior days, because it's been very confusing for some people in my neighborhood vicinity where we all used to vote before, and then the river, you know, is like a natural boundary, which is why I brought it up, Mayor. Because John's district that he served so well for four years goes to my back door, and it makes absolutely sense. And right down the end of my street is Councilman Slakka's district, and on the other side of that street, again, is his district, and up the street is my district. It makes, it's crazy. So if we could just keep it simple, folks, that'd be great.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might respond?
You go right ahead.
Assuming the council will pass this resolution, we anticipate that we would be sending you a proposed, maybe three or four separate maps to start looking at, thinking about. We expect, hopefully, now that the election's over and we know where everybody lives, that we will present those maps, get those maps out to you early next week. And perhaps the council might wanna think about, should you pass this resolution tonight, when you might wanna start working on those maps. It is staff's intention to follow the geographic issues that Councilmember Simons has been talking about, either by roads, creeks, rivers, whatever it is. So it is kind of easy to tell where a boundary is. I will tell you the challenge is, and you all have been through this, the challenge is trying to balance the populations between the districts. And so in order to make one district more equal to the next one, sometimes you have to move the line, and you don't end up in the middle of a road, or in the middle of a river. And those are the challenges that I think we will see as we go through this. But it's our intention to give you three or four maps to start chewing on, if you will. With those types of, with those lines drawn in those areas, you'll see the differences in the population, and then at some point in time in the very near future, council will need to come together, tell us where you'd like to have the lines end up. We'll have to pass an ordinance on this, and it has to be to the supervisor of elections by the end of March. So we do not have a lot of time, but just to let you know, those maps are due to you early next week.
Good, good.
Yeah, Ben?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Briefly, please.
Yeah, I did talk to the supervisor of elections, by the way. Forgive me for not being at all the parties last night, but I was serving with Diane on our canvassing board as you guys appointed me. So...
Nevertheless...
It almost made it to 2:00 in the morning. So, yeah, well, whatever. November should be fun. The supervisor of elections, I asked her, "When is she going to be doing her precinct work?" And she said, "I wanna hear what you have to say about your districts in the city, so the precincts can naturally fit into what you've decided. So don't think that the precincts that we have are gonna be the same." And that was important, because as we do districts, we want to keep those precincts, again, you know, within the boundaries and all that kind of stuff. I said it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Carl, what you're gonna do, you're gonna go ahead and bring us back the maps, and we're gonna be able to go hash this out later, right?
That's correct.
Good. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion a second?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
Councilmember Simons?
Aye.
Councilmember Longcart?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Slakka?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Audrey, you have anything else for us?
Yes, I just wanna point out to Councilman Longcart that I will follow up with a memorandum, both John Dolan and I, as to the advertisements and reconciliation of the State Land Planning Act with the charter, as well as the state advertisement requirements in municipality. Sometimes there is duplication as a result of the fact that we have more than just the charter we have to comply with. And I'll just follow up in a memorandum, and I'll copy all of council on that also.
Okay. Thank you very much. City manager, you pour. We're up to you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, item A is consideration and approval of the proposed revised strategic plan. Council will recall, the last time we presented this, this was, oh, 11 or 12 pages long, lots of detail. Council asked us to go back, see if we could get it to a higher level and a simpler format. We think we've accomplished that. Of course, it's your final judgment, but we'd ask for approval this evening so we can move on with some of these important issues.
Okay, good. Council, discussion. Yes, Bill?
Carl, I've read this entire thing, and I see what you've done, but is there any way to have cost estimates on how much it's going to cost to do these, all these things? I realize it's over a period of time.
I would find that would probably be difficult to do at this time, because quite a few of these objectives, sir, as you know, are gonna require workshops by the council, and the directions could veer off in a number of different ways. And so I think it would be pure speculation, probably not even worth trying to do until we get, until we get the scope of work a little bit better defined.
Thank you very much.
All right. Yeah, and that's, that's the point here, Carl, is that, you know, you start with a large paintbrush, then you start, you start filling in the details as we go along through these workshop processes. Frank, Frank, you're not Frank at all, are you?
Oh, good luck with this.
John, that's right. It's John, isn't it? Go ahead, go ahead. I don't know what the heck's going on.
Thanks, Bill. I appreciate that a lot.
It's been a long, yeah, you're right.
I'd just like to congratulate Carl and the staff in terms of the immense improvement over the first rough cut we saw a few weeks ago. You know, I think it's, it really, you know, the front end of a strategic plan has to be one page, and has to really be, give a clear guidance in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. And I'm pleased that we're at about that point where we can approve this, and I can leave in peace.
All right. Any other comments? Now, as to the concerns that there should be something in there so far as specific line items for projects out on the beach or towards beach re-nourishment, that type of thing, is there room within the guidelines that, as you see it here, as you interpret it, because you would be the one interpreting it, do you see the room in there for that type of, that type of discussion for the council?
I would say yes, but I think there's a couple of issues here. Number one, is strategic plan-wise.
Right.
And of course, we do have an element in here that talks about quality of life, and certainly the beach is a part of the quality of our life. And I think that as we look at maintaining the character of the neighborhoods and the environment out on Little Hickory Island, that that can, the beach can certainly be encompassed in that discussion. The second thing is, is really a budgetary issue, and I wanna make it very clear that there is a specific line item in the budget this year with money in it to do this re-nourishment, okay? Council simply asked the staff to look at possible revenue alternatives, but certainly did not direct any kind of assessment. So we have yet to come back and report that to council, but there is a line item in this year's budget to do the re-nourishment this year. I understand that the residents' concerns are for future years, for the next re-nourishment, six or seven years out. You know, we have heard their concerns, and I am prepared, as the budget preparer, to begin to try to pre-fund the next, the next re-nourishment, if that be the directive of the council. I will suspect that you will see, in my next budget presentation in July, you will, you will see that in the budget as a beginning. Again, whether or not council wants us to continue in that direction, or will appro- Again, whether or not council wants us to continue in that direction or will approve that, we will wait for discussions for the middle of this year.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go to John first and I'll come right back to you.
Yeah, um, you know, this, this beach renourishment issue and assessments, no assessments, that issue's not really on the agenda, but I think at least for discussion purposes, maybe it could wait to a, till another meeting when it's on the agenda, but I think, I think we ought to just talk and, and get a feel about whether there's any appetite at all to really pursue assessments. And if there's not, then why should the staff figure out, you know, educate us about assessments if there's not much appetite to do it? I mean, why waste the staff's time if, I, I have sensed a lot of us up here have said, no assessments? And if that's the case, then why, why waste the staff's time?
May I?
But, but it may not be appropriate to vote on it today.
Yes.
Yeah, hold on. John, you want to add something?
I just wanted to follow up on what Carl was saying, Carl was saying about the, the budget, this year's budget and where it shows up. And just in case anybody has concerns or doubts about it, the budget is online, it'll show up, the beach renourishment shows up on two different portions of the budget. On page 124, there is a specific line item. The account code, whatever that's worth, is 312015726300 and that shows about $50,000 to close out the portion of the planning and engineering part of the budget, which is our obligation now. Then the actual construction dollars show up in the five-year CIP on page 127 and that shows about $1,191,000 in the budget. So again, those things can change, but you've given no indication that they're going to change and those are the numbers that we've been working with.
Why, why don't we try this? I, it, but before we can make a, a commitment one way or the other, we need to know the fiscal ramifications of what we're doing. And so I think, are, are you prepared to, to come before us and go, you know what? Over the next how many ever years, you're probably going to, you need X amount of dollars for beach nourishment, it's going to be a wild number. And so in order to do that, you're, be prepared, council, to put X amount of dollars aside. Are, are you willing to do that? And I think that's the question that, that needs to be asked and answered. So if, if, if council, if, if you, if you want them to come up with that and, and, you know, if, if it's a big number and we're like, oh, we're, well, then we can send them back and see, is there any other options? But if a number is manageable, we may go ahead and say, well, you know what? Save your time, go ahead and let's start trying to budget that. Is that, is that fair, do you think?
Well, I think it's fair. I, I just would suggest, submit to the council that I think it might be difficult to have that discussion outside of looking at the entire budget as a whole.
Yes.
I, I, so I, again, I would suggest that perhaps that discussion is, is best had during the budget process because you, at least you know what kind of money you have coming in, what other priorities there, priorities there may be, and whether or not it makes sense, even in the coming year, to begin that pre-funding of the next renourishment. Right now, you would be looking at that outside of having the rest of that information.
Right, right.
So, I mean, but if you want us to come back with those, those numbers, we can do that prior to, to, to July.
I think it would be, I think it would be just a good idea, just in order to give us, because right now, we're, we're just guessing. We came up with the money this time, that's fine, but I think it's a fair question to ask that over a certain period of years, you can expect it to incur this much cost, what, what would it cost in general to do that? That doesn't mean we're going to look at that number and go, yeah, we're going to do it or not do it. At least we'll know kind of what that number is. I, I think that that's probably a fair thing. I'll come to you in a second.
And understand this too, and, and we tried to explain this when we met out with the folks on Hickory Island just a few weeks ago, that the, the difficulty that the council, the difficult position that the council was put in, when you did give us, you know, kind of direction to look at all the funding options, one of which, only one of which, is an assessment vehicle, but you told us to look at everything that might be out there. And one of the difficult things that you had to deal with was that we have a couple of different moving targets. We don't know yet the exact cost of the project, although we have a, a good feel for what the range should be. We don't have a real good feel for how many partners we're going to have. And by that, I mean, we don't know whether that there's going to be state money in the mix or not. And then another critical piece, which was a moving target, was we don't, we didn't know the percentage of the beach project that would be allocated towards a recreational benefit, as opposed to the part of the project that would be allocated towards storm protection benefit. We're a little closer now because staff has been working with county staff all along. So we've been getting pieces of that puzzle put together as we get closer to the county going forward. We think we have a much better feel now for which piece will be storm protection as opposed to recreational benefit. And frankly, I think staff was very close to being able to come back with a recommendation, and again, don't commit me to this because we haven't gotten all the figures in, but a recommendation indicating that we would not say, go forward with an MS to you because the storm protection benefit, that's the piece that would be allocated to the property owners, is relatively small. And again, we didn't know that going into it, we think we have a better feel for that now. So again, I just want to explain to people that when council asked us to look at all the funding options, it was because you really were operating with a lot of blanks, a lot of unknowns at that point. And until the unknowns become known, you were doing the prudent thing.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Stan, we'll go to Stephen, then I'm going to come right back to you, okay?
Sure. Mayor, so you, what, what we're looking for is a rough estimate somewhere around June?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
We can get it to you before then, if you would like, just to know the order of magnitude of the number.
Yes.
We, we can provide that to you probably within the next few weeks.
Because the last time the council made that decision, as I recall, it, it was just a shot in the dark. We said, we're going to put X amount of dollars a year away. And I, I don't think that's the appropriate way to do it. I think we need to be a little closer to the mark, seeing that, that, you know, money's so tight, you need, we need to be pretty close if we're going to be doing that. Martha?
Yeah, kind of like repaving your roads, you know?
There you go.
You have a repavement program, so we know X roads over here are going to be repaved every five years. Audrey, when we went to the Beach and Shoreline Grant Session, Begging Session last year, was it $7 million that's put away by the County of TDC funding under shores and beach? Do you remember what, was it seven or two? There's a big difference.
No, I want to say closer to $7 million is for the, the portion that is used for beach shoreline is seven and possibly the, I'm looking at Darryl to see if he has a better recollection.
Was it two for beach renourishment or seven for beach renourishment? I thought it was seven.
I would have to look in the doc.
Okay.
It was two million?
Seven?
For just sand and renourishment, it's two million, but there's $7 million total in the...
Budget for that beach and shoreline, okay.
Correct.
Um, yeah, well, we got to get a handle on that. But, you know, for the last several years, Fort Myers Beach has been up there begging and pleading for that beach renourishment money. And I don't know why they're any different than us for beach renourishment. So I don't know if we'd like that portion that you're talking about assessing, I don't know if that's available, probably not. Not, probably for storm protection, but maybe we can offset the recreational, it seems like up here, that, I, I agree with the argument the residents have made about, it's a public beach, everybody's available to go out to the beach, whether you choose to or not, is your, you know, up to you, your choice, but that it is open to everybody. I don't know about legally, the storm protection thing, but we could maybe offset that. How much are you talking about for the storm protection? Do you, do you have a percentage?
Roughly speaking, the number we're being told we could use now is 12%.
12% for storm protection?
Yeah.
Wow, that's not bad.
Well, that's what I just said, it's a rel, we just learned that and it's a relatively low number.
So anyway, at, at this point, yeah, at this point now, I mean, and I'll get right to you, Bill, at this point now, just find out what that number might, might be so far as year to year to year to year. And, and that way, council can have a, a better handle on that as you go along there. And Bill, go ahead.
My question is, do we have enough in reserve accounts presently? If we had to fund this by December 31st of 2012, do we have enough reserve funds to cover that $1,200,000?
I think the answer is the money's in the bank.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so would we want to go to get some of that beach and shoreline money because somebody else is going to get if we don't try for it? And, you know, they have resorts that are paying tax, TDC tax dollars, bed tax dollars up on the beach, they're realizing that impact up on the beach, I think we should reclaim that for them.
And I, I want to point out that when the Tourist Development Council and then later on, the Board of County Commissioners determines how to use that money for beach and shoreline, the portion that the county pays for their share is out of that portion.
Hey.
So you have that amount that will be going to Little Hickory Island. The question is, that you're asking is, can we ask the county for an additional amount? And there are several issues that I think possibly we may wish to brief you individually on where it might not be. I think we're bringing this issue back up in about two weeks or a month?
Okay.
For the, when is the deadline for the apps?
Well, that's the thing, the deadline for the apps is coming up soon.
John?
We have been closely working with the county on the TDC beach and shoreline funding grant cycle. We've been up to the workshop, we have different projects and programs that are in the mix, including the possibility of additional TDC dollars for the beach renourishment project.
Well done.
I don't want to make it sound like this is a done deal, though, we are looking into that possibility. Even if we don't, though, understand that there is at least $1.1 million of TDC dollars already in the beach renourishment project from the county's side.
Good, okay. Councilmember Spear?
Yeah. This may be the same point, but it seems to me that if there are, if our share, so to speak, the city's share is, is there, and, and yet we continue to leave this assessment option as, as on the table, you know, I'm gone. But every two weeks, we're going to have this same discussion, folks are going to come in from the beach and step up to the microphone and we're going to, you all are going to have to feel inclined to discuss it. I mean, if it's not, if, if, if it's fair to say that it's, it's almost certainly not going to be necessary because there are appropriate funds available, that we're just running these people up and down Benita Beach Road every two weeks? And, and it ain't fair to them and it's a waste of, it's a waste of council's time to keep talking about this every two weeks when, when I think we're being told that, not positive, not 100%, but it is very unlikely that we're going to be short of funds on this project. I mean, I, I don't think we can vote on it today because it's not on the agenda, but it's, but this has been the third or fourth time that we've discussed this in the last two or three weeks.
Okay, and like we said, bring us back the numbers, bring us back what it would mean per year to put into the bank, we can make a decision then, you can put it on the agenda, how about that?
With the staff recommendation.
With a staff recommendation, of cour, but of course. Council, is that okay?
Sounds fair.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Can you, can you have...
I don't want to commit to next meeting only because we are still getting information back and forth from the county. We will do everything we can to put it on the next meeting, but understand, I don't have control 100% over all the figures.
Ben?
Fair enough, yes.
But I do get a sense from my colleagues here that we don't want to assess if we don't have to assess. And I'm getting a sense from my finance director who's shaking her head, saying the money is in the five-year CIP, it's in the bank. So folks in the, the rows back here in the gallery, I think you can feel kind of comfortable. So don't worry, be happy. I think we're going to take care of it.
Okay, we've got a plan, you guys know what it is, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. As soon as you can get it back to us, we can put this to bed, so to speak. All right?
Did we get a vote on the strategic plan, sir?
Well, I'd ask.
Well, we're, we're, we're trying to get there, okay?
Okay, fine, I...
I have a question for you.
Uh, okay, questions on the strategic plan?
Ben?
Yes.
Do you think that the first item, which is downtown redevelopment, which has the lemon tree property, should be under the Parks and Rec Plan, like we talked about year, like months ago? Or should we have it under the redevelopment properties?
I, I don't think it really, my opinion, you asked, since you asked me, I don't think it matters.
Okay, I just know that we were talking about a park master plan and...
Yes.
You know, was it going to be continued under that?
Yeah, good, good.
Yeah, good?
I, I, I'm good with it, I think it's, it needs to be there.
Well, if it's under the park master plan, we might get ahead with that a little bit farther because it's a plan.
The park master plan is almost completed, all right? We're going to be bringing that forward in Mar, March. And I'm sure that that's one of the items discussed, it's probably going to be covered in both areas.
Okay, when I brought this up at budget time, the, the word was, no, we don't want to put any money towards that, let's talk about it at the park master plan time. So now it's not going to be talked out at the mark, the park master plan.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's going to be talked about in March.
Excellent, thank you very much, I'm leaving it alone, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the strategic plan?
So moved.
There's a motion, there's a second? We're here, I believe?
Yep.
Any other discussion? John?
No.
Nope? Roll call.
Councilmember Simons?
Yes.
Councilmember Longcard?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Slakka?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
You see, that wasn't such a chore, was it?
No.
All right, uh... Jeez, that's a tough crowd, I'm telling you, this is very bad, very bad. Okay, Carl, what else you got for us now?
Yes, sir, thank you. The next item, as the council is aware that the, the Lions Club generously donated $40,000 to the playground that was constructed at the Depot Park, there is an opportunity to name that particular playground. And here to discuss that further is Mrs. Perino, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Hello.
Well, hello.
I did want to give a little bit of clarification, just from comments, that we are not renaming Depot Park, that we're only naming the playground. So the park's name will not change, just the actual natural playground that we put the Lions Club money towards. Staff does recommend that we go with the name that the Lions Club has suggested, it's a good name for the park itself. It is for the children and through the generosity of the Lions Club that we have this playground because without them, we wouldn't have had enough money to, to build it. So we are good with the name, but the proposed location is, as you walk in the front gates, there will be some kind of stone or boulder that looks like the rest of the playground with a plaque on it saying the name. And then secondly, for the water fountain, there currently is not a drinking fountain at that playground and it is kind of a cute little Lions Club drinking fountain that they have said they would purchase. So we would not have to purchase a drinking fountain at all. There is water at the location where they would like the drinking fountain within the park. So for our staff, it would be minimal for us to install it. So it, it is a good thing that they're willing to put up the $5,000 to purchase the fountain itself.
Good, good. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to accept the name and accept the drinking fountain.
And there's a second to that, and there's a second. Any other discussion? Questions?
Well done.
Well done, well done. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Longheart.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Spear.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, keep going, Carl.
Next item on the agenda is the question of a wall buffer due to the widening of Benita Beach Road. As Councilmember Longheart indicated, there was a citizens' meeting that we held on Monday night. We were able to get the sense of the group. In fact, they all voted, and it was a, it was a great representation of the neighborhood. We appreciate, appreciate their input. They indicated very clearly, and, and Darryl's going to do a little bit of a, a talk here, but they indicated basically that they would like to see the coastal concrete wall, which is the, the, kind of the stacked-looking wall that the city typically puts up, and that they would like that at an eight-foot level and not a six-foot level. And we believe that's certainly possible within the contingencies of the project. So the money's already there at the project level. So we're, we're anticipating, we are not going to have to go deeper into our pockets to, and I'll lay for this wall.
Carl, does that include the, the extension that they're requesting as well?
No, I'm not there yet.
Okay, good, good. I just want, I just want.
All right, that does not, yes, that does not include the proposed extension to the west. I think we're going to hear a little bit more about that when Darryl talks this evening, but we did indicate to the residents on Monday night, it might take us a week or two to further investigate the possibility of a westward extension of the proposed wall. With that, I'd like Mr. Walk to take over and give us an idea.
Yeah, we changed a couple of the attachments from what you have in your packet based on the discussions on Monday night. Two things, on the lower right-hand side there, we, we've visually added or tried to approximate an eight-foot wall in addition to the six-foot wall in an area between East, Eastbrook and Westbrook Drive. Of course, there is the comparison of the coastal concrete wall, which the city has used on numerous other projects, and the Duratec wall, which is more what Lee County typically uses. And on the top, we've amended the drawing that you have seen in your packet to include the potential area west of Westbrook Drive that numerous of the residents wanted to have included in the project, and that we're looking into that. There are apparently some challenges with underground utilities. We're looking into that. We're also, Sarah Clark from, or Lee County DOT is looking at potentially getting an easement. So in case the utilities in the right-of-way should preclude, preclude that, perhaps we could get an easement and construct it. The, the results the other evening were that the, by a vast majority, the, the people there did prefer a wall as opposed to landscaping. They preferred the eight-foot height as well as the coastal concrete wall, which we have typically used within the city. And as Carl indicated, the, the numbers in the green sheet did not reflect the couple hundred feet additional to the west. And in fact, we understand now that if, if we were going to go with the, the county's so-called county wall, the Duratec wall, that we'd probably want to do that now because it's a heavier wall and access would be a problem later on. If we would go, want to go with the coastal concrete wall, we could probably do that later and save some additional charges from the contractor for basically interrupting his schedule and doing it now. So we have a couple there, options there.
Okay, let me, real quick, like, just for clarification, the wall that you, that is shown in there in red, does that include the 100 feet? The 100 feet is a part on the left, or the 100 feet is not shown?
In the lower left, or upper left-hand corner, there's a yellow.
The dashed thing.
And dashed, that is the additional.
That's the additional wall. Good, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Counsel?
Yeah.
Discussion?
The neighbors want the coastal concrete wall, is that what you said?
Eight-foot.
And is that kind of the wall that's in front of the preserve, Darryl?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's a good-looking wall. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, okay, go ahead, John.
Yeah, the, where the dashed line is, I, I mean, I, I understand completely the, the concern, but didn't we, when we denied the rezoning request and the comp plan request to make that commercial, didn't we leave three individual residential lots facing on Benita Beach Road? And don't those three lots, and don't those?
I'm not familiar with that, but that wasn't the impression that I had that evening, or Monday night.
My impression is there were three, there were three lots emptying out on Benita Beach Road.
Why don't we, Carl, what's, what's your request is, would you like action on the one part of the wall tonight, and then give you a, a week or so to look into that extra section?
Yes.
Is that what you're requesting?
If you would, because I think it would be important for us to send a signal to DOT as well as the residents, that the council is supportive of the coastal concrete wall at eight foot. At least we've got that part settled as we're planning.
Right.
And then we can continue to look at the westward wall. The, and the, I want to make it very clear on the funding here, okay? Lee County's in for 50% of this as well. So the contingency was made up 50% from us, 50% from the county. The money's going out for this wall, it's not coming out of our part of it. It's, it's a combination funding.
Okay, so right now, to get the ball rolling, we could entertain a motion to do the, we'll say, the red section of wall right there, eight-foot hall, eight-foot tall coastal concrete wall?
I'll make the motion.
Bill makes the motion? Second, and in that motion, you would like to instruct the, them to go take a look at the rest of that?
Sure.
And come back?
Yes, we will.
Okay? Everyone understand the motion, the second?
Yes, sir.
Darryl, do you have anything else for us?
That's it.
Okay? No other questions, comments?
Comments?
John?
Just a point of clarification on the timing. Darryl, do we need to know, is, is there an issue here with whether or not we want to interrupt the work schedule and do it now or later?
I would, I would like to get a good confirmation that if we do it later, we could save some money. And I know it's, would be asking the people to wait, but it, it appears that due to the fact that it's a lighter weight wall, that we could do that after the fact and, and not having to pay a contingency charge to the general contract, tractor, APAC, I'm sorry.
Okay, counsel, could we be flexible on that? And, and so that we could, if we could save some dollars on that, and just so the road gets, just so the wall gets built before the road does, I think, you know?
Right.
All right?
Can we come back with you and our confirmation on that?
We're looking at possibly a surcharge of an additional 20% if we do it now. So that's why we would like to have some flexibility to do it a little bit later as that, that's what we're.
So they're going to charge, yeah, we're going to charge you more while we're here. That's goofy, isn't it?
Can I, can I ask?
Nice, yeah, yeah, absolutely, look into it, yes.
What's the timeline, so we can let the residents know what to expect? How long would the, the wait be? I'm not talking about deciding the other part, I'm talking about actually installing the wall.
I think that's yet to be determined.
Yeah, we, the other night, Sarah Clark from the DOT estimated that, you know, if the decision was made to proceed immediately, it could be a matter of a couple months. But if we determine that we can do it at a lesser cost, it would probably be a year. So that's roughly the timeframe we're waiting.
Okay.
A year because the road's not going to be finished for a year.
Right, right, and, and we could do it as a small project rather than going through the road contractor.
Right, okay. So you will look into that?
Yes.
If there is significant savings, we can make that decision then, right?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, you understand? Right?
And this is, this, Mayor, this isn't saying yes or no, saying we're just going to check out all the issues with that other part.
This is saying, yes, we're going to build this wall.
Yes, I understand, but it's on the.
But the when is the.
The additional part that they're seeking, it's not saying no, it's not saying yes, saying we're going to look at that.
The additional 102.
And we'll decide on that later.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Spear.
Aye.
Councilmember Longheart.
Aye.
Okay, Carl, what else you got for us?
We thank you, counsel. Next is an update that Mr. Gucci Arda would like to provide with regards to the library issue, John.
Yeah, another one of the projects that we're working on, staff to staff, with the county, is, is obviously the library expansion possibilities, and I just wanted to report to council that as we had indicated a couple of weeks back, we thought that they were going to be bringing this to the county's management and planning. It is, it's on the agenda for next Monday's county management and planning meeting. County staff will be updating the Board of County Commissioners on basically what we have already talked about, how much evaluation they've done on a couple of different options, those options being adding on to the existing library facility, or tearing down and rebuilding a new facility on that site, or looking at other sites. I also expect that there will be conversation at that, and, and a request for direction, frankly, at that management and planning for funding considerations. So our plan from staff's point of view is to basically listen in, get as much information as we can, and report back to this group at the second February meeting with a request for direction on how to proceed.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Judah, tell me.
Good, very nice. Any questions for John?
I have a comment. Surprise. Commissioner Jud, I know, you're just like, you're going to.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Judah and I spent some time together the other day, and I said, hey, about that $4 million for the library. He said, oh, well, we're just waiting on you guys. We have it. We have it ready for you. So, you know, they're, they're waiting on us. I don't know what they're waiting on us for, but I'm glad to hear it's up in the county now. That's a good job.
Good. Thank, thank you very much, John, for your work on that. I appreciate it.